If I could have your attention please, I'd like to call this Public Forum on the Budget to Order. Our normal meeting time is 5:30, but we're gonna have a public forum on the budget from 5:30 to 5:45. We've had one individual sign up, and then when we hear this individual, if anyone else would like to provide input on the budget, then we'll take a few minutes for that. But at this time, I would like to call Mr. Wade Smith forward.
Good evening. I'll be very brief. First of all, I want to thank the principals of New Hanover County for allowing Mrs. Amy Oates, Mr. James McAdams, and myself to be the representative to the Budget Committee this year as the principals of New Hanover County. There are two things that I would like to personally thank people for in this process. Number one, there was a recommendation from the middle school principals that we need additional counselors at the middle school level, and we are very pleased that that request was heard, and hope that can be part of the budget along with the new counselors that'll be coming onboard at the high school level. Secondly, there was a lot of work done prior to the budget in terms of, with a compensation committee to just make salaries more competitive at various levels within the district, particularly for principals. There is, we all know, and have heard a lot about teacher compensation in North Carolina, and it sounds like the legislature's gonna be moving in a direction that will bring better pay for all the teachers in North Carolina. What a lot of people don't know is that North Carolina, in terms of principal pay, is ranked even further down the line, I believe maybe as low as 50th in the nation in terms of compensation for principals. And within that, over the years, New Hanover County has slipped to 34th in the state. So we think that the compensation package, which is gonna be really helpful in recruiting good leadership at the school level, is moving forward. And we appreciate that that will be hopefully included in this budget as it goes forward. When we think about, we all know that we're not going into corporate America when we go into education. But I would like people to reflect upon someone in corporate America who is supervising anywhere from 40 to 120, or even in some cases 150 employees, all of which have to be licensed to do what they do, all of which have to have at least bachelor degrees, and in some cases doctoral or master's degrees in order to do that. Throw on top of that, supervising or working with families of 800 to 1,000, and in some cases 2,000 students, to have people in those positions with that type of responsibility who are making less than six figures. In corporate America, I can't imagine that that would happen. And so we're really pleased that the board is considering, and the Budget Committee is putting forth this recommendation to make principal salaries in New Hanover County competitive. And I really want to just finally close with, the work that Mary Hazel and her folks do putting this budget together is incredible, and it's been really eye-opening and a joy for us to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now, that was the only individual to sign up, but at this time, we do have a few minutes left before we start our regular meeting. Is there anyone in the audience would like to come forward and express your concerns about the budget, any input, anything you would like to say to the board? Speak now, or how's that saying go? Okay, well, at this time, I'll call our regular school board meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. We now have our invocation. Glory, thank you for this day, this opportunity together to discuss the educational issues of our children in this county. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and all that takes place here tonight. We ask for your blessings upon all of those that work with our children daily in our school systems, particularly special blessings today since it is National Teacher Appreciation Day. Special blessings and a thank you for all the teachers, all the individuals that work in our schools daily. It can be very trying, and everyone knows that. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the choral group from Wrightsville Beach Elementary School under the direction of Mr. Dave DeMuro, the instructor. We have a microphone. If you would, please pass the microphone around. If y'all would come forward, up here. Yeah. I don't know. And if each student could give us your name and what grade you're in.
My name's Afegee, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name's Leanne, I'm in 5th grade.
My name's Lawton, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Cassie Anis, I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Cameron, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Maya, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Jane, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Mateo, and I am in 5th grade.
My name's Noah, and I'm in 5th grade.
Now, for ROTC cadets, if you'd have, we know you're in New Hanover High School. If you would give us your names and what grade you're in.
All right. Cadet Captain Alex Moon, I'm a junior at New Hanover High School.
Cadet Captain Ann Coffey, and I'm a sophomore.
Cadet First Sergeant Jose Velotaro, and I'm a junior.
Cadet Staff Sergeant Eric Donson, I'm a sophomore.
Cadet Dante Ardi Slappy, and I'm a Staff Sergeant.
Master Sergeant Dennis Jean, retired, JOTC.
Thank you. Thank you. You did an outstanding job. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please? Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Thank you. Item 2, is approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Higgins has indicated he will make his report from the national conference on the 12th and not tonight. The anticipation will build.
Okay, any other changes? Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Although, if it's a favor, please, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's approved. Item 3, is approval of the minutes. Would you like to do these one at a time or all?
All together. Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions? If it's a favor, please say aye. Aye. They are approved. Thank you. Item 4 is recognition.
Our first recognition this evening is of a 6th grade student by the name of Mason English. Mason is a student at Holly Shelter Middle School. And recently, Mason won the local Barnes &amp; Noble My Favorite Teacher Writing Contest for middle and high school students. Mason wrote about his favorite teacher, Ms. Amanda Lewenberg, a 5th grade teacher at Blair Elementary. And this is what Mason wrote. He wrote, "I think Ms. Lewenberg should win Teacher of the Year as I know she is the best teacher in the world. I am thankful that Ms. Lewenberg was my teacher. Not only did I learn Common Core, but I learned how to be kind, patient, and have fun learning." So Mason, if you are here with your excellent writing, would you please come forward? I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Hayes here. Congratulations on the contest and for showing appreciation to all of your hard-working teachers. And Ms. Lewenberg, if you're here, would you please come forward? It's Teacher Appreciation Day, and what a great tribute to you. Congratulations. With Mason's family and his principal, Ms. Kaike, are here. Would you please stand? Congratulations. I'm sure we'll be buying one of your books at Barnes &amp; Noble one day, Mason. And next, I'm very excited about this recognition. We are about to recognize a young man whose name is Deidreon Davis. And he, Mr. Davis, is a senior in the State Program at Hogard High School. And he was recently named the ACT College Readiness Scholar for the State of North Carolina. Only one exemplary student in each participating state received this academic scholarship from ACT. Deidreon will now be considered for the ACT National Scholarship Award next month in June. Deidreon, if you are here, we are so proud of you. Would you please come forward? I think I'd say, Mom, would you please stand so we can honor you? Mr. Sullivan and Hogard State Coordinator, Ms. Catherine Coleman, if you're here, would you stand? Thank you. Ms. Seed is representing Hogard. It's so nice to be able to recognize one of our young men in this way. It just makes me kinda choke up. Okay, so next, we will recognize some of our very talented band students who auditioned and were selected for the North Carolina Band Masters Association's All-State Honors Band. So students, if you're here, as I call your name, would you please come forward? So from our great Roland Grace Middle School, under the direction of Teacher Pete Frank, we have Francesca Altunier. Francesca, are you here? So these are some of the top band students in the state. From Myrtle Grove Middle School, under the teacher Anna Stanfield, we have Nathan Hardison. Nathan, are you here? And we have three from Ashley High School, under the direction of Band Director Robert Parker. They are, if you're here, please come forward. Abby Chibley, is Abby here? There she is. Aiden Smith Martin. Aiden, are you here? There he is. And finally, from Ashley, Caleb Price. Is Caleb here? Okay, thank you. I know you're feeling good about yourself. And now, from Hogard High School, under Band Director Reed, we have Riley Hook. Is Riley here? There she is. So if any of the band directors or teachers or principals and families of these students are here, would you please stand so we can honor you for your outstanding work with these students? Thank you. We all right? Okay, all right. Okay. Next, we would like to recognize some of our talented middle school singers who auditioned and have been selected for the North Carolina All-State Middle School Chorus. And these students are led by their teacher, Mr. Noah Melton. So as I call your name, would you please come forward? This is Middle School Chorus. Riley Blanchard. So she is an athlete and a singer. You go, girl. Madeline Bloomfield. She's so pretty with that dress. Her name matches the dress, Bloomfield. Keira McGwilliams. And Maddie Spearman. If Mr. Melton is here, would you please come forward so we can get a group photo, please? And Dr. Pinto and the families of these students, please stand. Would you come forward? Thank you, thank you. Way to fill in, Dr. Pinto. Thank you all, and congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have two students who won National Art Awards, but they aren't here this evening, so we are going to save that for next month. And next, we have very, very special recognition, and this is the very prestigious Governor's School for North Carolina. We have 14 students here in New Hanover County who have been selected to attend the 2016 session of this prestigious Governor's School. So as I say your name, would you please come forward, and then the family of the student, would you please stand? So in the area of choral music, we have Jeremiah Conway of Hogard High School. Also for choral music, from Hogard High School, we have Marissa Saber. For the area of dance, we have Kenna Casto from New Hanover High School. Is Kenna here this evening? Also in the area of dance, from Hogard High School, we have a young lady whose parents you may know. This is Ms. Chloe O'Brien. This is Dr. Kim O'Brien. Chloe is the daughter of Dr. Kim O'Brien and Mr. Al O'Brien. Now, how's that? Congratulations. For English, from Hogard High School, we have Claudia Opera. Claudia, are you here? Yes, she is. Also, for English, from New Hanover High School, we have Mina Yakobu. Is Mina here this evening? No? Okay. For instrumental music, Noah Marney of Ashley High School. Noah, are you here? There he is. Also for instrumental music, from Ashley High School, Jared Tanner. Jared, are you here? I like that confidence. It's like, oh yeah. Okay, in the area of mathematics, we have Giovanni Boudi of Isaac Bear Early College High School. Also in the area of math, from Hogard High School, we have Kevin Hugh. Is Kevin here? Okay. For natural science, from Isaac Bear, Andrea Lamas Nino. Andrea? There she is. For Spanish, we have Lonnie O'Neil Tarvin of Laney High School. For theater, we have Jacob Jones of Hogard High School. Is Jacob here? There he is. And our last one is also for theater, from New Hanover High School, Theo Bald Townen. Is Theo here, Theo Bald? No? Okay. Congratulations with all the parents of these great students. Please stand. Congratulations, students, to all your teachers and principals. Congratulations. And for our final awards, I need help from my friend, Dr. Wilmers. Dr. Wilmers, are you here? There he is.
It seems fitting tonight that the last group that we recognize, certainly not least, are the teachers that we have in the county who have achieved National Board Certification. National Board Certification is one of the highest achievements a teacher, working individually, can obtain. And what we want to do tonight is recognize teachers who have obtained it for the first time. And then we're gonna recognize teachers who have done it again, kind of redone the program and come back again to do it. So what we'd like to do is call your name, have you come up, and then at the end, I'd like to recognize the families who've been supporting you in this process. So first off, like Lindsey Bedore, Pine Valley Elementary School. Megan Gier, Pine Valley Elementary School. Danielle Greer, Sunset Park Elementary School. Jeremy Matthews, Anderson Elementary School. Katherine Quick, Sunset Park Elementary School. Those are all the teachers who have, that we have here tonight with us, who have achieved National Board Certification for the first time. If you don't mind, let's recognize them. After a tenure period, the teacher is required to go through the process again and to re-license. We'd like to recognize those folks who have renewed that license. First up is Allison Bellamy from Murrayville Elementary School. Jennifer Castine from Ogden Elementary School. Judith Fogart, Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. James Figliola, Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Tisa Freck, Connington Elementary School. Susan Gardner, Holly Tree Elementary School. Courtney Graham, Johnson Pre-K Center. Bronwyn Guthrie, Wrightsville Elementary School. Deanna Leek, Murray Middle School. Tanya Jordan, Wilmington Early College High School. Angela Keel, Ashley High School. Serena Perkins, Williston Middle School. Mary Smith, College Park Elementary School. Danielle Talbert, New Hanover High School. April Thompson, Alderman Elementary School. Tiffany Williams, Holly Tree Elementary School. Miranda Witkowski, Holly Shelter Middle School. Angela Whitmore, Wrightsboro Elementary School. That concludes the folks that have earned this after a ten-year period. And if you don't mind, all of the families out there who supported these folks going through this process, would you please stand? Thank you.
Okay, this time, next item on the agenda is our call to the audience on agenda items. We've had no one sign up, but we did have two individuals sign up for the non-agenda items. And I don't think the board will be upset. We're going to move those because they're two students. And we want to get them heard, so I know they're anxious to get back home, hit the books and so forth. So we're going to get you out here early because the meeting could last a while. So this time, I'd like to call Josiah Eason.
PowerPoint for you guys?
PowerPoint?
Yeah, a slideshow.
Did you realize you have three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't, we don't have anything set up, so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think, normally the PowerPoint is not part of a three-minute presentation to us, but.
All right, all right.
We'll have to hear what you have to say, though.
All right, thank you.
If you'd like, you could send it to us.
Okay.
And then we can go get it there.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Hayes and other members of the school board, and thank you for this time. I'm speaking against the effects of audiobooks for students in schools and the reason why, like, you don't hear much about it. I'm a very big advocate for it because I've always been a struggling reader in anything that I do, basically. And I've always wanted to try to find an alternative to help other students because I'm a senior at New Hanover High School. And in my future, I'm going in the fall to the University of Charlotte. And it's just, I've always wanted to help other students with the cause that I've had to deal with for four, eight years of my life, going through middle school and high school. And where it all started was in middle school with my librarian calling or asking all the students to write her a letter, telling her about what we want in the library. And I was one of the only kids that asked for an audiobook selection that we could choose from. And she looked at it and she wanted to make it something bigger. And she took my letter and used it for a grant that she was able to get for $3,000. And we were able to get at least 30 playaways, which is a new type of audiobook that is very, very easy to use. And it helps, it's helped me through the eight years of my high school and middle school years. I did some research, and this was for my senior project. And I did some research of all the middle schools, elementary schools and high schools in New Hanover County. And there was only eight schools that had a type of audiobook in the school. And there was four, just four of those had over 60. And the other four were 20 and below. So I'm just looking at, like, the opportunity that we could advocate to get new tech, because it's a new technology. It's using technology in the way of learning as being struggling. And it's helped me with the fluency of the reading and the retaining and comprehension of what the book was giving out. And there was emotion in the story. And when I was reading, I could never, like, take any emotion from it. And when I started reading them, I was just blown away of what I learned from the book and what I could take away from it. But if you guys have any more questions about it, my email was on my PowerPoint, but I can't show that. But, yeah, but thank you for this time and hope you guys have a great rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Cutting.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Henry Cutting. I'm a senior at New Hanover High School, and I plan on attending the University of Southern California in the fall. Today, I'm here to express to you the findings of my senior project and strengthen the case for increased funding of the arts. So for my graduation project, I researched the effects of music lessons and involvement in music on social and intellectual development. And I then translated this research into a product in which I taught four weeks of drum lessons to three students at Murrayville Elementary School. And I then administered pre- and post-surveys, allowing them to assess their self-confidence and self-efficacy. I did this project because I've been involved in music in the schools for 12 years now, I guess, since first grade. And I have taken drum lessons for 10 years, so I know firsthand the effects it can have. I personally have become a more confident and well-rounded person because of it. And then going into this project, I figured I would find some evidence that supported my notion that music involvement helps childhood development in some way, whether it was social or intellectual. However, I found the evidence overwhelming. Studies dating back to 50 years ago have shown that at least 30 minutes of music involvement in a day and increased involvement in music are linked to increased emotional intelligence and, in the case of percussion, increased math abilities, which makes sense, rhythm. Additionally, these effects were not isolated to childhood, and in fact, they found that they increased over time throughout college and postgraduate. In my study, I found similar results on questions such as, how well can you become friends with other children? I asked the students to rank their personal feelings on a scale of one to five. And all three of my participants increased by at least two points, I guess you could call it. So the common argument against funding for the arts would be that the arts are less essential than core subjects. And that is a notion that has been proven false over and over by respected researchers in the field of psychology. If cuts in music education continue at the same pace, generations of potential doctors, lawyers, and even professional musicians will be deprived of an invaluable resource and tool to spark a genuine interest and thirst for knowledge in all subjects. Further, the power of music to promote empathy and emotional understanding could provide a cost-efficient way to foster collaboration and peaceful problem-solving skills in local and global communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item six, administrative personnel.
None this evening.
Next item, item seven, Head Start. Item A, our report from Mr. Higgins, our liaison.
I don't know if it's going to come up or not, but anyway, I just have a fairly quick report to summarize. Well, here it is, some information. There are currently 257 students in the Head Start. We're limited to 260. There's 68 on the waiting list, and I did not get a chance to talk to Shannon about why there's 68. Some of those have not been included. But we are almost full at this present time. We have a, if you look at that listing, we have a vast diversity of students. Probably a little bit of overlapping in some places. But we have Native Americans, Asians, one from the Pacific Islands, 56 Hispanic, multirace, other races, and white and black minorities. It's about half and half, a little bit more male than female. And the average daily attendance is at 90%. We do have 27 special needs kids. The grant requires us to have at least 26 of the special needs kids. And there is some more information there about two-parent homes, single-parent homes, public assistance and those things. There are currently new applications for registration for 2016 school year are available at most elementary schools and at the Pre-K Center. I would remind you that the fiscal year has ended. It ended on April 30th, 2016. And we are now in a new fiscal year, beginning May 1. Advocating for our rising kindergarten children to apply for our lottery and magnet schools, information's been given out. The center was awarded a $4,000 grant from the county for an outdoor learning environment. I was over at the meeting, over at the Johnson last week and observed what they were doing with that. They have planted some fruit trees. They have created some areas for box gardens. So they're working on that. I did attend the North Carolina Head Start Association State Conference, which I gave y'all a report on at the last meeting. And then congratulation to Ms. Bailey Ossleger. I hope I didn't mess that up too badly. We're pleased to have her be nominated for the Master Teacher Program in the Watson College of Education, University of North Carolina at Wilmington. The next council meeting will be this Thursday, May 5th, 5 o'clock at the Johnson Center. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Any questions, comments from any board members? Thank you. Item eight, under information. Item A, policy's on for a first reading, Mrs. Nichols.
We have two policies tonight, Mr. Chairman. The first one is 2310, internship placements. And I'm going to ask Dr. Smith if she will cover this for us, please.
Yes, thank you. We are bringing to you policy 2310. It represents more or less an update of that policy. We have updated the language, as you can see in the title, going from student teaching and internships to internship placements because we offer more than just student teaching placements now within our school system. We clarified some language so that interns and our partnership agencies would be more familiar with our expectations around placement of students as well as removal of students who were being placed. And then also clarifying the expectations of the school system.
Any questions, comments?
The next, policy 8520, student dress code. First, I'd like to say that last week, Dr. Markley hosted the Student Advisory Group of High School Students. And we asked them, how could we communicate with them, especially on topics that impact them directly? So Valida is going to, after we have the reading tonight, she's going to post this on Twitter for the students. And that will give them an opportunity to give feedback, and then she will share with us exactly. Now, we have these policies posted for other community members online. But somehow, they don't, the students don't come to the school board website very often. So this is a way to get some feedback on this particular dress code change. So, Dr. Holliday, I'm going to let you share this one with us, please. Thank you, Dr. Holliday.
These are all for information. Are there any comments, questions? They'll be on next month to vote on. Excuse me, item B, Magnet Schools Grant, Appendix B, Dr. Smith. Excuse me, item B, Magnet Schools Grant, Appendix B, Dr. Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring information to the board and to our audience and the members here tonight regarding the federal Magnet Schools Assistance Program. This is a grant that some of our board members may be somewhat familiar with, as this was a grant that the district pursued not too many years ago when we opened our magnet school programs within the district. What I'd like to provide you with is just a little bit of information in terms of the purpose of this grant. The purpose of this grant is to provide school districts with funding to reduce the isolation of minority populations within school districts. Its also purpose to provide support to school districts to enhance educational experiences for those students within the district that are not performing at the level at which we would like to see them perform. And then finally, it is to support innovative learning opportunities, which would allow us to use this funding to support our proposed CTE high school, and then also to expand opportunities to our current magnet school programs. This is a three-year grant. Typically, the rewards for this grant are between seven to twelve million dollars, and then funds would be able to be used for professional development, for positions, for experiential educational opportunities for our students, as well as supplies and materials. The focus of the grant is on systemic reform, so putting into place practices within a district that would allow districts to reduce, as I said before, the minority isolation of particular groups within the district. It's also the focus of the grant to support innovative practices within school districts, to increase diversity and to increase choice, and then also to create opportunities or increase opportunities to develop marketable vocational skills for students within the The requirements that are placed upon the LEA would be that the LEA would commit to reducing, eliminating, or preventing that minority group isolation within its school, which aligns with our current district practices. Already, in our district, we allow for open choice. We allow for choice enrollments as well. We have programs specifically designed to attract diverse groups to some of our most underperforming schools, and we also have specialized programs at those low-performing schools within our district. So, this grant would not ask our district to necessarily do anything different. It would provide us with resources so that we could continue the work and expand the work that we've already begun. Our current challenges as a system are related to the fact that we have these schools that we're trying to increase that minority isolation. They're identified as low-performing. Another challenge that we have is that, overall, we've seen declining enrollment in those schools. Additionally, there's lack of diversity in those families that do apply to those schools, as well as the current school grades. We're all familiar with the North Carolina school report cards, and those schools right now either have a designation as a D or F school. And then also, two of those schools are identified by the federal government as priority schools. So, not only do they have the identification as low-performing, but they also have the identification as, as priority. So, what I bring to you is a recommendation and a rationale that I would like for you to consider. The recommendation would be for the district to support a voluntary desegregation plan, and the rationale would be that it would allow the district to receive funds to support innovation and to assist in funding our CTE high school, because that would be included in our grant application, as well as expansion and support to some of our most underperforming Listed some additional resources for you, and then I'm very happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
I would say this is a very highly competitive grant.
Yes.
Generally, less than, probably five to six are awarded nationwide per year, but it is directly in line with what we're trying to do with our magnet school programs.
How do you measure? You say it's a commitment to reduce, eliminate, or prevent minority group isolation. How do you measure that? So, you've been doing it a year, you look back, how do you measure your performance?
So, if we look at the demographics of a particular school and we compare it almost pre and post, that would give us some indication if our efforts are working, if we're attracting a more diverse population for that school.
So, does this, does this grant place requirements on enrollment?
No.
So, does, it does-
As Dr. Markley said, it's a very competitive grant. It is only what we are proposing as a district, and what made it very attractive to us is when we look at the requirements of the grant, these are things that we believe New Hanover County Schools is already doing. These are things that the board has indicated that it already values.
So, like with our early college high schools, where the percentage of students that are, that we're targeting with enrollment, it, the grant that we're, that we're pursuing here is not going to put, it's not going to put restrictions on what it is, what it is we're trying to target with our CTE high school?
No. This grant, this grant would only be applicable to the schools that are mentioned, and with the CTE high school, there, there are not any specific benchmarks that you have to hit. It's that you have to make enrollment open. It's that you would provide transportation, which is what we're already planning. It's that you would offer specialized programming that would be attractive to diverse populations of, of students, which is what we're already planning as well.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, can you talk about what the next steps would be after tonight for the board as it relates to this, this grant?
So, what we're, we're bringing this information to you tonight for consideration. There's a resolution that's included in your attachment. What we'd like for you to do is to consider approving that resolution, and then we would bring a recommendation to you at our work session on the, on the twelfth for your approval. With that approval, we would be able to pursue writing this grant.
So, this is information with adoption, with approval at our interim meeting on the twelfth?
Yes.
And in the, in the grant, are we going to have an opportunity to see exactly what the, what the parameters of this will look like?
Well, we can definitely share with you the entire, you know, multi-page document.
I, I'm just concerned about, I just wanna see what, what exactly we're, we're getting into in terms of-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, what I would say to you, we, we're, our plan, and as Dr. Markley said, it's a very aggressive, very competitive grant, and it has a very aggressive timeline. They only made it available to us, I wanna say, April nineteenth. We were checking daily, and it's actually due at the end of May. So, you know, we, you know, we're gonna be burning the midnight oil in, in terms of getting this done, but what we can do, most definitely, is share with you pieces and parts along the way.
Okay.
But essentially, it is the programming that we're already doing. We're looking at expanding that and enhancing that. So, I know a concern that has been expressed is addressing the social and emotional needs of children, and, you know, our budgets go as far as our budgets can go. This would allow us to put some additional resources related to that specifically in these schools that we're, we're targeting. We also could look at doing even greater wraparound services, so more intensive summer services, more intensive after-school services, and possibly even some before-school services as well. But we will definitely share with you as we move along the way, very, very willing to do that.
Prior to the twelfth, Saber, who is the person who heads, who's working with our magnet schools, will provide you with a draft of where we are at that point and what we got. Just understand that between then and the end of the year, it may, end of the month, it may morph a little bit.
Yes.
Right. I, that's, I just wanted to see some of the moving pieces of it, just to, you know, so there aren't any surprises, I guess you could say.
I understand completely.
That's all. Thank you.
I may, may have missed this. Who is funding this grant?
This is a federal grant.
Federal grant.
So, it's funded through the federal government.
So, they understand how the state is grading our schools?
Um, I, I can't speak to specifically whether, to the degree that they understand that, but, you know, North Carolina is not the only state that's placing school letter grades on their schools, so I would think that the federal government would be apprised of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe somehow in our wording, we can explain that it's not the best form of evaluating the success of our schools.
Exactly, and as I've said before, you know, using the criteria that we were under last year, we would only have one low-performing school in the district.
Yes.
Because some folks decided to change the definition, we now have six, even though all of the schools met their growth expectations.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you're asking us about this resolution, and please understand, I mean, I don't have, I mean, I, I think it's important that schools be available to whoever wants to attend them.
Yes.
However, the fact still remains that because of the location of our magnet schools, it's very difficult to get a cross-section of people there. I mean, I, I think Gregory will probably have a cross-section now with a lot of students coming out of Forest Hills, but Snipes and Freeman and Virgo are very difficult to end the, the, the de facto segregation, if you will, that goes on, if you wanna call it that. But I mean, it's a fact, that's, that's a, a result of the neighborhoods, and we have been committed to neighborhood schools, at least most of this board has. You know, I, I just, without more details, I mean, I'm not opposed to adopting a voluntary desegregation plan, but I'm, without more details, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
Well, and that is what we will include in the grant. So, for us, it is, as you mentioned, Gregory, providing that, those schools with options for parents that are that attractive to parents. So, as we see that parents are very interested in their students receiving instruction in another language, it may be that there are other things that parents are that interested in as well. So, I surely could see us doing even more community outreach, and when I say community outreach, I mean going to the entire district and finding out what it is that parents are looking for and would like to see in the, these schools. We have families who have left our public schools for charter schools, we have families who have chosen to homeschool those, their children. Those may be families that we can target by giving them different types of options and opportunities at these schools. And right now, again, you know, we take our budgets as far as we can, this money would give us the flexibility to expand and enhance that.
Well, I mean, what, for example, just, I mean, I see Gregory as potentially recruiting a diverse population because of what offered that. We've got Freeman, which is a engineering school, which should be attracting a diverse population from across the county because of the nature and the people at NC State they're working with, and GE they're working with, and other groups like that, and yet it's not. And so, I, I fear what's going to happen is that schools like Freeman will cease to be magnets and will have to move the magnets somewheres else in order to be able to get that diverse population that you would like, that we would want to have in order to fulfill the nature of this grant. And so, I, I, I'm just a little concerned about taking any action on, on this resolution until we have more information about how we're going to do it, if you understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Okay.
And you'll, we'll, like I said, we'll provide you with everything we've got prior to the meeting on the twelfth, so you can see the progress we're making on this grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Smith, what are the budget ramifications beyond the federal, the federal funds? What are, what matching funds would be required to go with this?
There are none.
Okay. And if we adopted this resolution tonight, would that would prompt you all to bring us the, the data for another approval, or would this approval tonight give you the legs to go out and make it happen?
What we're seeking in the resolution is the ability to pursue the grant, because it's, it's, I've shared, it's a huge investment in a short period of time, so it'll be quite a few people working on this very, very intensely to get it ready by that due date. So, signing the resolution this evening would allow us to pursue that, but also understanding that you're considering this, and that this is something that you have an interest in, and an interest in learning more about, we are still planning to go forth with it, whether the resolution is signed tonight or not. If, in turn, the resolution on the twelfth is not approved, then that would end our pursuit of this grant.
I, um-
Well, this, this is, this is on, on the agenda for information. I didn't know, I didn't realize this was an action item.
We're not voting today.
No, we're not voting today.
No, it's, it's not. It's, it's just seeking your consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Really looking for an endorsement tonight to go forward. Approval would actually be on the twelfth. So, there's information and just a little bit of feedback from you folks moving forward.
Well, I'll just make a comment then, since, since you ask it that way. I strongly endorse it. I think it's the right direction to go. I think the board has the latitude to direct how it moves forward, I believe, but we've got, we've got a problem, and we need to take steps to address it. So, I'm just one of seven, but I, I think it's the right way to go.
Any other comments, questions, as we'll, this is information tonight, and we'll vote on it on the twelfth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a process piece, you'll actually vote for this first before you would vote for the, pursuing the grant, because you need step one to get to step two.
Next item, item-
Can I ask a question? Where did the resolution come from? I mean, you know, normally-
This is, did we write the resolution, or was it part of a-
The district wrote the resolution.
Okay.
Any other questions? Item C, I think we're skipping tonight.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Next item, item D, Healtharama, Appendix D, Dr. Holliday.
Mr. Chairman, the board, I think there was a lot of discussion about this over the past two months, regarding the Healtharama, which began the school year, which was in Health Green, and, and those things, and Healtharama, with that as well.
You can open yours.
And, ultimately, this year, the process, the student participation in Healtharama, uh, it did a lot, and we had a opt-out, because parents hadn't signed statements specifically that they didn't want to adopt this way. That process changed this year to opt-in, and anticipation called, uh, grace. So, there's been a lot of discussion at the board level, and we seek some input, and there has been some discussion, and how many times for us to be ready to do this in the fall, fall.
Need to turn that on. Excuse me. And we're just simply asking for direction from the board. We've provided you examples of the opt-in and the opt-out form. I've also heard some additional input in, in conversations with board members regarding a form that would indicate that you'd have to, you'd have to indicate one way or the other, and then the school would have to determine, make sure that every child brought back a form, whether it be opt-in or opt-out. So, that, that's a third option, but that's also, that would also be very similar to the opt-in. But at any rate, we're looking for input from the board. Like I said, you heard all the concerns about this in the fall, and we're just bringing it to you for, for input, and we're going to go with this. Again, this is information. If you need to vote on it, or you need to give us specific information, we can wait until the twelfth. But I wanted you to be aware that that's one of the things that we're asking, is just simply for direction as to where the board wants to go.
Actually, I was gonna suggest that we, you know, you all know how I feel very strongly about the opt-in form. And I realize that the, the change in the, in the way we handle the forms, you know, it's unclear as to whether or not, some of that, the drop-off is due to just a miss, you know, parents not realizing the change in the form, or what is, what exactly is causing that. So, you know, I actually like the combining the form in terms of I do not, or I do, because it will give us some more data as to where people are on, how they feel about, you know, whether or not they're comfortable with it. It does require returning the form, though. You know, I, I still think that, you know, in, we're trying to encourage parent participation, and I think, you know, this is just a very basic request from parents that, you know, weigh in here. Do you want us to, you know, do you want your child to participate in something, in information that we're gonna be, you know, collecting, data we're gonna be collecting? And the issue that I had really was the addition of the BMI information that had been added last year. I think we had a discussion about this. So, you know, I'm comfortable actually adding that piece and maybe, you know, tracking that and seeing exactly what, you know, kind of unfolds after the fact. But honestly, I think some of that has a lot to do with the change in the, in the opt-out to the opt-in form.
And that was my conversation with Dr. Holliday, in that, now, the elementary schools have homeroom settings where they can certainly keep track of this, because they have to keep track of a lot of things. But sixth grade still has a homeroom setting, so this is something that only occurs once a year. So it's like a field trip form. You've got to have opt-in or opt-out. So you need to know that the parents have been reached and have this option. I still would include some kind of wording regarding privacy, because you do have, where volunteers are going to be working, but parents need to be assured that this information is private information, and it's, and if they opt out, somewhere on there, we need to encourage them to seek private screening, or some other screening, because some of these children still are not getting the services, help that they need.
Also, Dr. Holliday, is there, and maybe just, maybe my recollection is fuzzy. In the past, was there an option for parents to select whether or not they wanted this individual, you know, the vision, or, you know, the speech therapy, or was it an all-or-nothing situation?
I don't believe we had a checklist as to if they were participating or they were not participating.
It was just an all-or-nothing thing. I couldn't remember if that was the case.
Yeah, I believe so.
Because, you know, there may be a situation where a parent may say, well, I'm comfortable with, you know, I take my child to the, you know, to the dentist on a regular basis, so I don't feel the need to have, you know, to waste the volunteer's time with a dental screening. So would it be advantageous to give them the opportunity to opt out of certain, certain services that they feel aren't necessary, just by virtue of the fact that they are already taking care of those on their own? Would that, I don't know, is that something that we could consider?
I can certainly take that back to our group. It really hasn't been a question, but...
I mean, I can, I can understand, how do I put this? Certain, certain schools may, this may not be an issue, but for some, for some schools, it's probably, or for some demographics, you're probably gonna see a lot of students who are probably gonna have regular screenings that they may not need to, you know, they may not need some of these services. And to me, it seems a waste of valuable time if the parent's already doing some of these, some of these services on their own. So to me, it seems, it seems redundant. My children see a dental hygienist on a regular basis. I don't see the need to have, to have those screenings if I'm already taking care of them, you know, at home. If I had the option to, you know, sort of opt out of that particular portion, that would be, that would, that would take, it wouldn't be a waste of time for the volunteer, who could, who could give that service to somebody else.
Have we had parents complaining about, I mean, when I would, to me, this has been done forever.
But they didn't come. Last year...
But it wasn't a volunteer that did it.
It dropped off.
When I was in school, it was the school nurse did it.
Or the health department.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's why I'm asking...
Well, the health department is doing this now.
Right. I mean, they would line you up, and you'd open your mouth, and they took a stick, looked in your mouth.
Well, here's the thing, too.
I don't see any problem.
Ms. Nichols raised the question about volunteers. Train volunteers to screen for vision, train volunteers to record age, gender, and measure weight and height. That was all done when we were going to school, but it was done by the school nurse. I don't understand why it's not being done by either the school nurse, or at the least, on the voluntary thing, by the classroom teacher.
This is, this is something that we've done in our system for a good while, and it's been a really good thing.
I don't doubt it's a good thing. Don't get me wrong.
And we don't have full-time school nurses at all of our schools. We have nurses assigned to all of our schools.
And I thought they were supposed to be keeping these kinds of records. I thought that was part of their job.
We do.
How do they have the time? I don't know how they have the time.
We do, but this has been something that we've been able to bring and get, and get some services for some, for some children who might, and when we talk about some of the screenings, and I certainly hear everything that you're saying, and it makes, it makes perfect sense. However, there are some things that even in affluent families that you don't know, and you're not looking for. And if you were like me growing up, certainly I didn't grow up in an affluent home, but I grew up in a working-class family that tried to take care of me. But I wasn't until the fifth grade. I didn't realize that there were, that there were actual leaves on trees, you know, because it looked like a green blob. Because I did not wear glasses until I was in the fifth grade, and it was through a screening at school that happened. And my parents were very vigilant. My parents were good parents. But they didn't, they didn't, it wasn't anything I was complaining about. So there are some things that you can catch with this. I hear your concerns. If you'll allow me to take this back, work with my team, we'll figure out a way to get, if what I'm hearing you say is get, get, get input from the parents one way or another, if we have to work, and Belita and I can work together on getting the word out to the community into, using our call system, using our website, using our Twitter account, and all of that. And maybe we didn't do a good job of that last year, so I gotta take some of the responsibility for that. I'll take all the responsibility for doing that, because I didn't think of it. And maybe we'll see how it goes this year.
Before we started the new form and so forth, for centuries, it seemed like, did parents complain if the child went home and said, you know, my vision was checked at school today? Or someone looked at my teeth and checked those? Or some of the other things they do here? Did parents, I mean, I'm not aware of their public outcry from parents. I mean, to me, historically, this has been a function that's been performed in the public schools, and parents appreciate it.
But I don't think it's been done by volunteers. It was, at my school, it was done by the school nurse.
On the whole, they just said, open your mouth, and you open your mouth.
We've used, we've used a combination of our medical professionals at the, at the Health Department and volunteers, and trained volunteers, primarily to do the vision. And that's, like I say, you saw some of the statistics last year. We were able to catch a lot of not only vision problems with just a simple reading in mine, which was a fifth grader not being able to see leaves on trees. That's why my batting average in Little League was so bad. Yes, because I couldn't see anything.
No, but the issue, Don, and I don't, if you recall, I don't think anybody's had, you know, myself included, had any issue with, you know, the vision screening, the hearing screening, or the dental screening. It was the addition of the weight, the BMI. And the Health Department came and talked to us about, do you remember, do you remember the Twinkies? Okay, so, you know, and talked to us about collecting this data, and all of this information, gave us a PowerPoint presentation and talked about BMI. And so the question then became, you know, when does the, you know, we're starting to collect information, we need to inform the parents that this is being done. And that, that's when we had the conversation, do we do an opt-in or an opt-out form? So this is, this is where it all came from. And so, you know, my issue is, you know, I want to make sure that we're giving parents an opportunity to, to, this is informed consent. You know, if they want this information being collected, this data being collected on their children, which I don't believe is anybody's business.
Wasn't it kind of a total BMI for a grade level?
It was age, gender, height, and weight, so that they could calculate BMI. And, you know, when you pressed the Health Department, their, their answer to this was, well, we're trying to determine, you know, what kind of programs we can put together. You know, there, to me, it seemed very, it was sort of encroaching on a parent's, a student's privacy. And, you know, it just, I think parents need to know what's, what's happening, and at the very least, have the option to opt out. And I think most parents are comfortable with this. It's been going on for so long, they don't even know that it's happening. And I think that's what, they're relying on the fact that parents aren't paying attention to the addition of this. That was my concern. That's why I was pressing for the opt-in portion.
But let me ask, what do you see as intrusive about any of this? I mean...
To me, it's no, it is, it is not the federal government's business what my children's weight is.
This is not the federal government, is it? This is us, isn't it?
It's the county and the Health Department.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it's, is it actually the Health Department? I mean...
Yes, this was the Health Department.
Well, what about doing, kind of flipping it and doing the public service announcement, telling the parents what the services are, saying that this is, this is what's being provided. If you do not wish to attend, or you do not wish your child to participate, then please make sure to sign an opt-out form.
We, we will, we hear what you're saying, members of the board, and we'll go back and work on the form and make sure we get input from our parents. And we'll also do a very concerted Public Relations blitz, making sure parents know what their options are, and we'll get this done.
Uh, Dr. Holliday...
But we hear what you're saying.
When, when does this form go out? Is it at the beginning of the school year, when all of the data, information forms go out, green sheets and things like that?
Pretty close, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you have the data, the numbers as to what the participation was before and what it was this year?
I do. It was, it was significantly less. And I can get you the exact numbers. And I think we did provide that earlier, but I can, I can get that before you can get it back to you. I don't have it tonight, but it was significantly less.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Holliday, if possible, you see, if I were a parent, I would sign and send the whole thing back. Then I don't have any information, time, date, what they're gonna do, or anything. If you can find a way that the child's name and everything goes on the clip and return part, then the parents would have all the other pertinent information.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Next item, item A, Certified Personnel Recommended for One-Year Contract, 2016-17. Appendix F, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief history of this. When the General Assembly changed from tenure to contract agreements with teachers, until 2018, all teachers that we hire, from this point on, will have one-year contracts. And because that gives us a large number, and that number will grow as we move through time, and our tenured teachers who currently have tenure retire or leave, their replacements will all be at that one-year contract until 2018, when we see what the state gives us as far as a selection of contracts. But right now, everyone's on a one-year contract. They're still meeting the policy and state requirements that we've set up, and we have a large number. So what we wanted to do, we kind of talked about this last year, is get this to you as information tonight, so you can review. It's a forty-page list. And then we'd bring it back in June for approval to hire these folks under the one-year contract. In the future, we may try to do it a little earlier. We're looking at policy changes now, and we'll work with Mr. Bullard as far as time. That way, maybe we can use contracts to solidify the numbers of teachers that we have, and they would be with us longer. We'll try that. But for this year, there's this forty-page of one-year contracts we'd like for you to review.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Dr. Wellmers. Item F, 2016-17, Proposed County Budget Request. Appendix K, Dr. Markley.
All right. First of all, I would like to thank the board for the hours they've invested in the number of meetings we've had outside of the regular board meeting related to the budget, not just mention all the time you spent reviewing documents. We're not quite there yet, though. We will be, though. We have one more meeting. So at your request, we scheduled an interim meeting for the 12th. We have to do it prior to the 15th because of state law to vote on your official county request. Yesterday, the county manager released his budget proposal, which included a five-and-a-half-cent tax increase to fund what he referred to as bond debt. His proposal for increased funding from twenty-six-twenty to twenty-seven-hundred, with three million for capital outlay. We're very pleased with the county, because this is the goal we've been working towards for several years. Now, our initial proposal is twenty-seven-fifty. At the meeting on the 12th, we may want to consider reducing our request to twenty-seven-fifty to match the county manager's request as a way of showing support for that proposal. Just a couple of notes to consider as we head into the 12th. Last week, the governor released his budget, which had average raises of five percent for most teachers. Veteran teachers would get a bonus instead of a raise. School administrators would get a step increase and a bonus. And other state employees would get a three percent bonus and not a raise. Now, we expect the House to release their budget within the next ten days. So we'll begin looking at some of our salary proposals based on what the House budget looks like. So I would recommend that you consider to revise your proposal at next week's meeting to the twenty-seven-hundred-dollar level to match the county's request. Folks, I do not see us getting more than that amount from the county, and there's a good chance it could be less than that. So looking at it, there are some things that we can consider on the 12th. There's the timekeeper system, both the installation and the one-year cost that we could put off. There are some council pieces we could look at. We could look at our pay plan as it relates to non-certified and central office, and either scale that back or postpone it. Wait and see what the House does on the state employees, because they may give a raise that's significant. I would ask that we don't touch the principal pay or the differentiated pay for some of our high-need schools. So please look those over, so that when we come back on the 12th, we can have a discussion that if we want to reduce to the twenty-seven-hundred level, what are the items that we have to look at to get us there?
So if you cut it from twenty-seven-fifty to twenty-seven-hundred, is that like 1.3 million?
Yes.
About?
Proximal.
Okay.
So, and prior to the 12th, when we send out the packets, we'll send you the list of all of the items that were more than just the expansion items that we could look at, and possibly scale them back.
Good. Thank you for that.
And we'll be voting on, voting on this on the 12th.
You have to vote on the 12th, because I gotta hand you to the county, and two days after that. Ari Azel will shoot me if I don't have it ready by the 15th.
Any other comments or questions? At this table, we'll take a five-minute break.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, sir.
I think our five minutes is up.
That was impressive.
Item nine, Superintendent's Report.
None.
Item ten, consensus items. Item A, Personnel Appendix. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item B, Beginning Teacher Recommended for Standard Professional II Certificate. Appendix G, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, this is a recommendation for all of our beginning teachers who are in the third year of obtaining their professional II certificate. I'd like to recommend these folks for that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Just a note for the board, we, we're contracting on a, on a year-to-year basis. Licensor is different than contract. The state still does what they call their beginning teacher license, which is for three years. And then you roll to a, a standard II license after that. So licensure and contracting with teachers are really two separate tracks, if that makes sense.
Good point. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item C, Budget Amendments. Amendments. Appendix H, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm recommending approval of amendments for the state general and other restricted revenue funds. But specifically on general, I wanted to point it out that I'm requesting a fund balance for utilities of four hundred thousand dollars. But that was due to an error we had made in our department on accruals last year. So in last year's budget, we only had eleven months of expenditure instead of twelve. That money dropped into fund balance. I'm just asking that we roll it over. We'll correct that with thirteen months this year, and then we'll be corrected going forward. So that was oversight on our part. That caused a little bit of a budget problem for maintenance in the utility budget, so I'm asking for help correcting that.
Motion approved. Move. There's second.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item D, Change of School Assignments. Appendix I, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. This is a routine request for release to neighboring counties whose parents are employed by those counties in those school districts, and just asking to release those students. Matter of routine.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item eleven, Under Old Business. Item A, Policy for Second Reading. Mrs. Nichols.
This is policy thirty-one twenty, fund balance. And, Mrs. Small, would you like to review anything, especially the reduction from the eight to seven percent?
Sure. We've discussed this policy during our budget presentation, as well as at your last meeting, when we brought it for first reading. The, the main substantive change is reducing the board's fund balance goal, or unreserved fund balance, from eight percent to seven percent. But there's also some change in, in language in the, the first and second paragraph to just go with the current, current standard accounting language. And the last two paragraphs added just in sort of our next steps, if, if we were to fall below the board's minimum goal of seven percent, how, our plans for how to restore that funding.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
We need a second. Mr. Higgins, move for approval.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Approved. Thank you. Item twelve, Under New Business. Item A, Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees Appointment. Has my name there. As you know, we appoint, the Board of Education appoints as other entities, county commissioners and so forth, trustees to the community college. Eighteen months ago, we had one of our appointees that had to resign. The board at that time appointed John Melia for the, for that eighteen-month commitment. That eighteen months is up now, and it rolls over now to where it's a four-year appointment. In the board, it was advertised the way we normally do. Sometimes we hold interviews, sometimes we don't. This was filling out an, you know, eighteen-month appointment, and we've had good communication from the community college about wanting to see Mr. Melia continue.
Ms. Chairman, I nominate John Melia for, to a full four-year term on the Board of Trustees at Cape Fear Community College on behalf of the New Hanover County Board of Education.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and second. Any comments, questions?
I have a comment. I'm gonna vote against this, not because I have anything against the proposed appointee. I think he's done a fine job. I'm voting against it because I would like for us to have some procedures in place, so that we're not going back and forth and sometimes interviewing, sometimes not, especially when we advertised and asked for people to apply. And then we're, we are deciding against that. I've, I've also talked to several trustees and the president of the community college, and they would like to see us. And again, this is no slight against Mr. Melia in any way. But they would, I think, like to see us continue to interview. And that's just their feeling. But again, it has nothing to do personally with Mr. Melia, I want to make that clear. I just would prefer that we have a set procedure, especially since we did advertise and ask for applications.
Well, I, I would like to say, Mrs. E. Step, that I read every application, and I felt that Colonel Melia, his application was as strong as the others. And since he had the experience and was well-received, that I did not have a problem in supporting his nomination.
That's fine. I'm just saying, I, I hope we have, we could get some procedures in place so that we are clear going forward.
We, we have procedures in place. We've done it both ways. I think it depends really upon the circumstances. As I stated, this was filling an eighteen-month term, and in talking to the president of the university and the others down there, that they were very, they spoke very highly of wanting to see him continue. And anyway, any other comments, questions? We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Item B, Wilmington Health Access for Teens Agreement. Appendix L, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. We have three very successful, and actually, we've been at the kind of the, the cutting edge of school-based health clinics, basically through your leadership as a board. We were able to get this moving forward, even going back to when Mr. Bilze was on the board and actually served on the board of the Watt Clinic. And you guys also have been very supportive of this. Not only supportive, you have been actually advocates for this. It's that time of year, again, where we have to redo our agreement with, with Watt. Watt currently, Wilmington Health Access for Teens, currently is in a, in a management change, Coastal Horizons, which is a, a longtime outstanding community organization that also works in adolescent health and also some, some other issues and substance abuse and those kinds of things. It will still maintain the name of Watt, but adding Watt as a subsidiary of Coastal Horizons. And it's, we think it's gonna be a very positive thing, and they've been doing a really outstanding job at three of our sites, which is at, at New Hanover, Laney, and Ashley. We're asking that you approve these agreements tonight, so that we can move forward with those schools. There should not be any change in what, in, in what's going on at those three schools with the, with the changeover. In fact, Mrs. Grady, who is the executive director of Watt, is here tonight, also with Mrs. Weller Stargill, who is the executive director of Coastal Horizons. of Coastal Horizons. These two ladies have been meeting with Dr. Markley and myself and talking about the fact that we're gonna continue this partnership, and we think it can be very positive, and we think there's some real positive things that can come out of it. We also have an agreement with Coastal Horizons, and we've been working with Coastal Horizons for a long time in referring our students who have substance abuse issues and our long-term suspended students, who in lieu of long-term suspension, if they have a substance abuse issue to start with, for their first offense, they can actually go through a program that Coastal Horizons has, keeps our long-term suspensions down, and it also helps our kids who have maybe starting down the road towards substance abuse. It's been a wonderful partnership. So two really great community agencies coming together, working in the schools, we see as nothing but positive. I sent you some information today, report cards from those three places, so a lot of really good things going on with those school-based health centers. We're not asking tonight, but we will probably come back if the county appropriates some dollars for opening a clinic at Hogard, which is one of the things that you guys have asked for for some time. And already talked to Dr. Sullivan about that. They're identifying some space, and if the county comes through and we can, and as my granddaddy used to say, "The good Lord willing and the creek don't rise," although I look at that, the bottom just dropped out, so the creek's probably gonna rise, so we might have some issues with that. But hopefully, we can have, in the near future, school-based health clinics at all of our comprehensive high schools, which is where we have the largest concentration of children. We start down the road looking at middle schools later, that might be down the road, but certainly getting that one in Hogard is been a goal of this board for a long time. But again, we're not asking for that tonight. Hopefully, we can come back and ask you for that, with somebody with a little bit deeper pockets than we have, to help us with that. So we're just simply asking that you approve the standard agreements. This is no different than in the past several years. We're just asking that you allow us to continue within our agreement with Watt slash Coastal Horizons in maintaining those school-based health centers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday.
Move for approval?
Second. Comments, questions?
Just to say thank you for all the great work you all do in the community. We appreciate it.
I think that's echoed by the board, we do. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item C, memorandum of agreement between New Hanover County Schools and UNC Wilmington for Isaac Bear Early College High School, appendix M, Dr. Holliday.
A lot of times, I don't come for you guys with a lot of real positive things, and tonight, I get to do that. Isaac Bear, both of our early colleges are among two of the best early colleges in the state, based on data. Anything you look at, it's not how we feel about it, looking at the data. Isaac Bear has been one of the top performing high schools in North Carolina over the past several years, and they've had the good fortune of representing Dr. Markley at the 100% graduation ceremony that the Department of Public Instruction gives every year in September, and Isaac Bear has been a part of that every year. And last year, it was wonderful to have both principals up there of the early colleges with 100% graduation. So both those places are doing a really bang-up job. But tonight, and I'll be coming back at some other point, but at tonight, I'm asking that we renew our memorandum of agreement between New Hanover County Schools and UNC Wilmington to maintain the Isaac Bear Early College High School on their campus. So then, this is just a standard agreement, but again, just an opportunity to toot the horn of that school that's done a really good job. And the diversity of getting first-time collegegoers over the past couple of years has just been tremendous. I mean, that has grown tremendously. And I just wanted to point that out. So, Mr. Chairman, just asking for your approval on that.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions?
I just want to verify something. Paragraph 26, where it talks about the faculty and employees and that the university is checking them. I know we had that problem several years ago, that they really didn't want to get involved in checking to see if they were on any kind of list or anything like that. Do you get a report from them about what they have done?
No, sir. What Mr. Bullard and the general counsel for the university did when that was coming into question is to write language in that, is if the general statutes require. There is a different law for both the community college and the university about Jessica Lunford Act, and so we had to put that in there for the college, is if the law requires it. And the law, you're gonna have to help me here, Mr. Bullard sitting over there, the law does not require the same level of background check for a university professor or a community college instructor that it does for a high school person.
So it is possible that there could be people who are on a registry someplace that are coming in contact with our students?
They do their own background checks, so, again, Mr. Bullard's gonna have to help me, that's unlikely, because they do their own background checks, but it's not, they're not bound by the Jessica Lunford Act as we understand it. Wayne?
The general counsel at the university, and I had a difference of opinion on whether Jessica Lunford Act applied to this contract, and we thought it did, they thought it did not. And so we reached a compromise in the language that said the Jessica Lunford background checks are required only if the law says they're required. In my opinion, the law says they're required. So I believe the contract requires them to do the background checks. We have not gotten any verification from them that they're actually doing them. We could ask them, but the contract does say that if the law requires the background check to be done, they will be done. And in my opinion, the law does require it. So...
But aren't we right back to where we had that argument, I don't know, three, four years ago, when this first came up, and they said they didn't feel like that they needed to, or that it was justified? I thought, I thought we had agreed that they would do it, and there's wording here that kind of indicates, and that's about the best I can use, indicates that they would do it, but all I'm asking is, are we getting any verification from them that in fact, they are checking? Because these are high school students. I mean, even if they're on a college campus, they are high school students.
To my knowledge, we've not asked them for verification, but we certainly can ask them for verification.
I would think that would be something we should probably include, that, I mean, at least the, I mean, I know that walking down the sidewalk, they can't guarantee who you're gonna pass, but if it's somebody who comes directly in contact, be it a professor, be it even a TA or somebody like that, I think we should be able to know that they have not been on any kind of predator registry. And I would kind of like to have that.
We'll be glad to ask them to provide verification that they've done that.
But that's part of it. Now, we just haven't asked for the verification. We don't know what they're doing it. We don't know if they're doing it.
Right. But it's part of the contract?
Yes.
Yes. So I guess it's just a matter of just asking, I mean?
We'll ask.
Yeah.
We'll ask. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved, thank you. Item D, cooperative agreement between New Hanover County Board of Education and the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, appendix N, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you. Ask that you, that you, I'll ask that you approve the agreement between Voc Rehab and New Hanover County Schools. This has been an ongoing agreement where we work with our children who, when transitioning them into the world of works, our children primarily with, who are covered under IDEA, I.A., children with IEPs who are graduating, providing them vocational rehabilitation services. There are 105 agreements across the state of North Carolina between school districts and Voc Rehab, so this is a fairly standard agreement, and we think ours works pretty well. Most of you know where the location is. They're located over here in the Spencer Building. Scott Crouch, who is the lead counselor, worked with me out at Laney. He was my Voc Rehab guy out there when I was there, and Scott's a really good guy. And they do, they do a really nice job. So I ask that you re-approve this agreement.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item E, 2016 through 2019, New Hanover County Schools Academically or Intellectually Gifted Plan, appendix O, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Board Chairman. Would ask for the approval of the 2016, 2019 academically gifted plan. The Department of Public Instruction requires that districts revise their local academically gifted plans every three years, and that they build that plan around the six state standards associated with the academically gifted program and the practices associated with those standards.
There you go.
Official.
And so the changes are contained in the plan, and very happy to answer any questions that you have. We have with us our academically gifted supervisor, Ms. Donna Sloan, who knows this plan very, very well, inside and out, but we would ask for the board's approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Approved, thank you. Item F, bids for Veterans Park Direct Digital Control System Replacement, appendix P, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the bids for the replacement of the DDC systems at Veterans Park.
Move for approval?
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item G, EA Laney High School Painting Contract, appendix R, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the bids for painting of at Laney High School.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item H, Wrightsboro Elementary School Floor Replacement Phase Two, appendix S, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Request that the board approve the bids for the floor placement on the first floor of Wrightsboro Elementary School. Second floor was previously completed.
Move for approval?
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item I, Roof Repair Service Contract, appendix T, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the annual roof repair service contract.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions?
This is the, this is the open order that's just as we need it?
Yes.
This is not an actual job?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item J, Glass Repair and Replacement Service Contract, appendix U, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the glass repair service contract, annual glass repair service contract.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item K, Painting Service Contract, appendix V, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the annual painting service contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item L, Fire Alarm System Inspections and Repairs Service Contract, appendix W, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the annual service contract for fire alarm. It includes inspections, it includes monitoring, includes the UL Runner, and it includes any repairs that might be needed.
Move for approval? Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item M, Grease Trap and Subject Tank Service Contract, appendix X, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that the board approve the grease trap and subject tank service contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item N, Athletic Field Maintenance Service Contract, appendix Y, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Request that the board approve the athletic fields maintenance service contract renewal.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yes. Just for clarification, two questions. Number one, and I'm not, I hate to acknowledge this, Virgo, does Virgo use our athletic fields?
This is for the game venue fields. I don't believe Virgo is part of this.
Yes, it is.
Or are they part of a, yes.
Page 16 of 37.
Yes, they do. They play, they play sports.
Yeah.
Even smaller, smaller number of students as they have.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, all right, the other question I have, and maybe it's just something y'all were doing, on page 17, under Hogard, Laney, New Hanover, Ollie Shelter, you got the first number, and then the next three numbers, you have a circle around them. Is there any, I mean, is there any significance to that, or is that just y'all were marking something, or what? You didn't do it anywhere else. That's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, Chris?
I can answer that if nobody else wants to. My understanding is that it was, it was, the bid was, presented an option. The first number is for rotary mowers. The other number was with reel mower, and remember, we got into a discussion previously about using a rotary mower or a reel mower. And so by circling the other ones, we were telling the contractor, we wanted the reel mower to be used, not the rotary mower.
Okay. And these, by signing this contract, they are agreeing to use a reel mower?
Yes, the price reflects the reel mower utilization.
All right.
But we wouldn't get them to use both. It was either or, so that was a way of selecting which, which we chose to use.
I just, I just want, because the other places, you didn't have that, and I just wanted to have an understanding of why those were being circled.
Have we had any feedback in terms of how the fields have been maintained?
Say, I don't know, sure.
Have the what? I'm sorry. Have we had any feedback on how the fields have been maintained?
Yes, we've not had too many. There's always some complaints from a coach or two, or they want more cutting, or something like that, but nothing significant. They've been fairly well pleased with everything.
And they've been responsive?
I've met with the athletic directors during Rick's meeting a couple of times, and with just minor concerns here and there, but they tend to respond to the concerns very quickly. And so we've had pretty good service from these, from this particular firm, and that's why we're recommending renewal. That's why we're able to do this each year, because we can pull it back whenever we want to and recompete.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item O, Wrightsville Beach Baptist Church Lease, appendix double A, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the continuation, or actually, it's a new lease for the Wrightsville Beach Church. We, as you recall, we had the previous lease for the classrooms at the church, and we had renewal years. Those years have culminated, and so this is a brand-new lease, but it also has additional options for renewal, which will take us through the renovation of Wrightsville Beach.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any questions?
Wrightsville Beach has agreed to allow us to continue to use the trailers out there?
They, they have, and this is made contingent upon the continued approval of the city council at Wrightsville Beach with their zoning waivers for us to continue. That is in the lease that says it is contingent upon that. If they reneg, and they tell us to move out, then we have an option. If they reneg and they tell us to move out, then we have an option within the lease to break the lease.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Of course, and they know what we're trying to do, so I don't...
Yes, they know what we're trying to do, they're supportive of us because we're going to remove the mobile units that are out there after the renovation of Wrightsville Beach, renovations and additions are completed.
Right.
But they will expect those units to be gone.
Right. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item thirteen Call to the Audience, Non-Agenda Items, we've had no one sign up, other than the two that we moved to the beginning of the meeting. Item fourteen, we need a motion to go in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A one and one fifteen C dash four zero two.
So, moved? Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session.[1471.23]